Recorded meeting, meeting is also will also be available on the towns YouTube YouTube channel. Now, people in the room and people also online, please mute your cell phones at this time. First thing on the agenda is approval of March eighth, March eighteenth, we're going to meeting minutes, February twenty eighth, executive section session, and March twenty eighth, twenty twenty two work session. Motion. Motion made by Sally, seconded by Bill Hamm, to approve those four meeting minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign, motion carries. Next is the adventure sailing MOU.
Yes, I think Amber presented this to you all via email, and we have representatives from the organization. We, Amber and I feel like they've been very good stewards of the program, and we've made a few tweaks with the contract. I'll let Amber and you guys take over.
Yeah, so we sat down, we had a few meetings with them from just kind of reviewing how twenty twenty one went, as Jenny noted, only changes compared to previous years were dates, just getting equipment out earlier than in previous years, and then kind of going over conducting individual classes. We felt more comfortable just having full classes on like the sailing Saturdays and our regattas, but other, and then also the staging of the equipment. But those were the only changes, correct me if I'm wrong, from previous years. Yeah. And I also know it's brought up, the insurance, I did today get the insurance list, their insurance listed with the town of Culver.
I think that should be stipulation in the memorandum of understanding.
Right, yeah.
Has been executed? Will be executed, the MOU?
Yes, we can add a statement that's that requires them to provide that insurance, and then maybe authorize you to sign it, then Amber and I can update it to add that sentence with insurance.
And I mean, we have it, and it's not like an evergreen contract, it's annual, so.
Yeah.
Is there a motion to do it?
I make the motion that we approve the memorandum of understanding for the adventure sailing program as revised to include stipulation for certificate of insurance, whereas the president of the council has signed that MOU.
A second?
Second.
Motion been made by Rich, seconded by Bill Hamm, to approve the MOU for adventure sailing with the addition of adding the insurance clause to it, and authorizing the president of council to sign it. All those in favor, any discussion? None, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
We will get that updated, and next time you're in the office, folks.
Laura Walls, Marshall County Economic Development Corporation, thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me. Technology works a lot better when I'm here in person.
You know what you mean.
Yes, so I said at your last board meeting, I'd come in and and give a little bit of update, some of this is a little bit of a repeat, but I'll be look over that. This is basically the the update I've been giving to the other bodies around the county. Don Fox, who is your appointment to the MCEDC board, is here tonight, and it's his perspective and expertise is invaluable on the board, and so I want to thank you for for having good taste, such good taste in in your board or board appointments. I wanted to touch on some of the specifics that the MCEDC has been up to as it relates to the town of Culver. We we've been active in the in the Culver crossroads in both the Development Committee and the Housing Committee. Is there any media that is here? So Greg Hildebrand in our office has taken a personal, along with professional interest as he lives technically in borough, but considers him a, he's a Culver native. So Greg has been very engaged and involved with those two committees and been searching for some data and looking for tools to assist with retail. He just, he's been pitching hard and use software. I don't know if he's talked to you about this yet, Jenny, that tracks foot traffic, and it's eighteen thousand dollars a year, so I've started to do some due diligence on it. I think it's really important to also talk to the retailers to find out if this is something that that they would find valuable, but it would be a countywide database, so retailers throughout the county could take advantage of it. And he's also been working on the, as I said, the Housing Committee. We personally have been working with Jenny and the rest of the Crossroads Ready Committee, and the MCEDC contributed ten thousand dollars to to engage the Troy group to help us put together the strongest application possible for ready funds. The total cost is estimated about forty five thousand, so the MCEDC contributed ten. That kept us also from having to go to the individual towns and ask them for a little bit of funding to help us pay for that, just just wanted to get it going, get moving on it. The MCEDC was also, at your last meeting, I stayed on long enough to to listen to Linda, Linda Yoder present on Blue Zones. The MCEDC was one of the first contributor to to the Blue Zones initiative. We think it's really important, and we're supportive of it too, and we did a four-year commitment for that, five thousand dollars a year for four for four years. Also involved with Lifelong Learning Network and the Career Innovation Center that we're trying to get up off the ground. And then I am on the Executive Committee for the South Bend, El Part Regional Partnership as well as the Board of the Directors, also on the Hiring Committee to replace Regina Emberton. So I think it's really important to stay engaged with that group and and stay in the know. I reached out to Regina after our last, after your last meeting, even though she's no longer with the partnership, trying to get some clarification on the, hate to bring it up, but the on the regional cities grant for four hundred thousand dollars for e-hub. I did not get any additional information that I could share with you, unfortunately, but but I did reach out to her, and we we had a discussion about it. And then some labor data that I think that you will find interesting, the February unemployment figures have just come out. We don't have the deep dive yet on the the specific numbers, but the overall unemployment rate in Marshall County in February was two point one, the state's rate was two point seven. And so just as I told the county council, this came up at their at their meeting last month, one of one of the tricky things for us when we are working with on business attraction and expansion is companies want to know, well, where are we going to find the people? And our numbers, well, in December, our unemployment rate was point nine percent, which is a double-edged sword, and companies are scared off by that. But looking at the numbers for the surrounding counties to to Marshall, especially to the west and north, their unemployment figures are above the state's average. So that's what that's what I use, we we do a we do a radius, we typically, depending on the wage scale, we'll go out thirty to forty-five miles. Fortunately, in our neck of the woods, thirty miles equals thirty minutes, and if you're paying twenty or more an hour, people are willing to drive thirty minutes. So we're really leaning on the labor data from our neighbors to to try to ease some of the concerns of the companies that are either expanding or looking to come here. The last slide is the Board of Directors, Bill Davis is our is our chairman this year, Greg Miller is our vice chair, Mark Gumball is our secretary and treasurer, and as I mentioned before, Don Fox, he's so valuable, he's worth that multiple mentions. We have a really strong group of people on our board. Be happy to answer any questions that that you have.
Any questions for Laura?
I thought it's been great to have Greg involved in the Crossroads team, the small business development team, you know, spearhead some things and get things going. Logistics and organizational skills are definitely a plus for us, it's very helpful to have that.
I'll pass that along, we have a board meeting on Thursday morning, I'll pass that along. I know I find it very, very helpful with those organization skills too, somebody to contribute to that.
It's been great.
I just want to say I'm pleased to see you here tonight, as I think the rest of the council members are, and I did talk to Don after last meeting, and Don said that he would come on quarterly basis, and if you come twice a year, I think, give us the updates, that'll help satisfy what we're looking forward to get out of MCEDC.
I expect that it'll, you'll see me more than twice.
That's fine.
A year, and and Don and I were just talking, we're gonna, we'll try to, so you don't, you don't get both of us, so hopefully you'll, you'll, you have someone from MCEDC pretty often then.
The thirty mile radius, where where did you get?
So the thirty mile radius is, there's there's labor data that shows how far people will drive at a certain wage point, so we're working with companies, and we've had some some companies that are paying thirty, thirty to forty dollars an hour. I'll give an example, South Wire in Bremen, their wage scales are a lot higher than the county average, and so we can go out further by plugging into database, we can go out further to to look at where their labor shed is. They know that they have employees that are coming from La Porte County, even Porter, so they know from HR already that they're getting those people, but there's some calculations, there's a database.
You answered my question, I got it, so thank you.
They go thirty, just because that the average wage for the county is about twenty dollars an hour, people are willing to drive.
Wage scale is going to drive that.
Right.
Obviously, you've answered my question, thank you.
I like to think of myself as a good example of that. I have a pretty hefty commute, I wouldn't, away, I mean, no one would drive ninety minutes for a twenty dollar an hour job, you know, that, you know, people are willing, though, when you get certain kinds of jobs, people are willing to drive a long ways.
Yeah.
And South Wire is sort of this stuff.
Any other comments, questions? No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is Lake Fest.
Hello, my name is Andrea Knachi, I'm the president of Lake Fest, and I submitted a special event permit to the town, which hopefully everybody's been able to take a look at.
Yes, it's here, it's still rotating among department heads.
Oh, it is, okay.
You're good, though.
Okay, and I did want to share with you the Lake Fest mission, which is new for this year, in an effort to kind of revitalize the festival. The Culver Lake Fest team is an all-volunteer nonprofit group committed to giving back to the Culver community by raising funds to plan and host a weekend of family-friendly activities and entertainment, and by offering opportunities for community groups, civic orbit organizations, and businesses to raise funds to help them achieve their goals. Our theme this year is Art is in the Air, and we're looking to have some new events added to the festival this weekend for this year for over the course of the weekend that celebrate art in the community, but we're also looking to continue some of the old traditions of Lake Fest, which include, of course, a fireworks show, Miss Max and Cucky, the car show, and things like that that you might be familiar with as well. And within the the application where it filled out when street closures were going to be, or when certain things would be taking place, like the parade, I did want to also pay some special attention to that, as I'll be requesting barricades from the town for closing those streets, or posting signage around town for no parking, which will come from the police department. And then also, I do note that there is, there's a question on the application asking about alcohol being served at the event, and although nothing's confirmed just yet, the, there are two people who want to do a beer garden on the Friday night at the festival, so you'll see that's not in the schedule that I submitted with the application, but it is something that can be discussed among the committee, and they will fill out any additional permit needed for that if they they move forward. Just, I guess I ask if you guys have any.
Questions about the festival, maybe that's a better place to start than kind of going over.
Still, like Amber, Wayne, and myself have looked at the special event permit, and first of all, congratulations, this is the earliest I've ever seen one.
Oh, great.
And given it's Lake Fest, that's a bonus for us on our end. The other thing that they they did last year is Andrea and some of the other Lake Fest committee members did a postmortem with our staff, so that we could sort of get our heads around how to improve, and I think they took the feedback and in such a positive manner. Wayne and I are are still working with Andrea on some of those details. If they do a beer garden in a park, obviously, it would have to come back to council and be approved, because it doesn't allow that. So what we're recommending is for now, take the information, let us work out getting the other department heads to sign the special event permit, let Andrea and Wayne have time to work out some of the details that need to happen, but so far, everything looks okay. We just want to make sure we work out whatever the spirit garden might be, the parade route, I think you may be meeting with some people about, there might be potential for changing that, or.
I think that conversation, so tomorrow morning, we're having a meeting with Suzie Mahler. I delivered notices to all the businesses on Main Street and Lake Shore, which is essentially where the parade will be impacting, and I received positive feedback from everyone, with the exception of Cafe Max, so I offered to meet with Suzie to talk about it again, because I had also, I talked to all the business owners before sending them a notice of what street will, which streets will be closed, where the parade is lining up participants, and also any additional measures we'll we'll take for crowd control. This year, we're going to have some signage printed that motions people to sit more close to the street rather than block business entries, so hopefully that that works, and we'll have more volunteers walking up and down, making sure there's a clear path for people to walk if they're shopping or dining on Main Street or Lake Shore.
I just appreciate that, because there's a requirement of the event permit.
I would like to compliment you on on your communication.
Thank you.
Give information to people, openness and discussion about the parade route and responding to that, I think is is the first.
I mean, what you could do is approve the permit pending approval from the department heads, but since we don't have all their signatures yet, we normally don't at this point, but we knew Andrea wanted to come in and present to you guys, and make sure everyone's sort of on the same page. We do have insurance and schedule itinerary for the weekend already, and.
Which you can also find online, on our website, we do have the schedule posted there, and we have been updating it as new things have come up, not just the beer garden, but because we've changed the event date back to July fifteenth, sixteenth, and seventeenth, it opens up the possibility to have more of the community school, sports teams, and clubs involvement, which is what I really wanted to establish for Lake Fest, within that mission to uplift more parts of the community and allow them for fundraising efforts, and so they can achieve their goals. So we have the volleyball team, which usually comes in and they do Uber cards, and they'll be able to to raise money for their team. We have the football team, which will be doing the trash pickup for the festival weekend, and we will, Lake Fest will be giving a donation towards the football team. The bass fishing club just signed up to do a bass fishing tournament, so we're bringing an old event badge that wasn't able to, we weren't able to do that last year on Fourth of July weekend of the moratorium, so I'm really proud of the work that the committee has done to have some more involvement from the kids in the community, and I really am looking forward to what they're able to achieve this year. It'll be great.
Just so everybody knows, why don't you tell everybody the website so that they can go to it?
It's culverlakefestival.com, and our email is culverlakefestival@gmail.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
What, council have any questions for Andrea?
I would just like to compliment you on your enthusiasm, I can tell you're really engaged, so.
Thank you. And also, as you're reviewing the maps for the festival, the for the parade route, you'll see which streets have the red X on it, those are the ones that are blocked off, and I've also drawn onto the map of the festival itself, where we're requesting barricades, so that's one thing I just wanted to make sure to keep in mind.
Yeah, we'll make sure that Bob takes a look at this, too, because he's the one that we worked that out with, but he'll be one of the people signing up on it.
Yes, and, okay, and I don't know if Bob also is part of the the signage, or any, or if that's everybody's decision, but I would also like to draw attention to, in the permit, two weeks before Lake Fest, I'd like to hang a banner outside like the town entrance, so I I believe we need special permission for that, and then one at the town park, saying that Lake Fest is stopping.
Is the one at the entrance just going to go on the, like, stakes or something, or is it?
If they go on stakes, I also saw Tony Sellers for Winter Fest, he put it on a fence near there, so whichever works, I'd rather hang it on a fence, which is already dug into the ground, rather than having to ask for more permission to dig into the ground and put on stakes, because I think that's what we did last year.
It's a little dicey, so. Yeah, I think you guys could maybe approve the signage at the time that you would, maybe if you come back for the beer garden, because you'll have to come back to that, you could, or you could, we could approve the signage as part of the permit application, because it is all marked in here, so.
Well, all the, like you said, departments have looked at it yet, I think.
Yeah.
It needs to go, make that circle, come back here.
Yeah, and I know Amber and Andrea will end up having some meetings as well as Andrea and Wayne, but we'll be able to get through.
And that's probably, what, within the next two weeks, or is it going to be?
It could be, depending on their permitting situation on the alcohol, I don't know what type of beer garden it'll be, but it varies, does it not, Wayne, depending on what they're doing?
Well, it can, I mean.
So that can take time to work out with the state.
Yeah, I can tell you some of my concerns, but, I mean, I went along with the beer garden thing, but this is one of the biggest events of the year.
Right.
Already, as I said, there's not many get close by, that's usually can impact till three AM. I don't want to see us over time, bring something like this, and then bring problems into the middle of the festival. Wanting to attract things, I'm just concerned in the future. See too many festivals have beer gardens. We got one of the biggest festivals in Indiana, fifteen miles from here, they don't have one.
They're going to this year.
They're going to this year, aren't they?
So.
Very, very.
And the basketball court here, I think.
Yeah, I was in the favor last week.
The one I discussed with Wayne ahead of this meeting was not only security, but I brought up the beer garden, and I'd like to limit it to just that Friday night from seven to nine thirty, and then they can wrap everything up and be out of there, you know. But there will be a band, which you'll see on the schedule, performing from eight to ten PM, so I just wanted to kind of keep the beer garden in that west pavilion area, and then limiting the hours of operation to seven to nine thirty, I thought, you know, how much are people going to drink in that span of time, so hopefully no issues come up like you're saying, but it is close to.
I'm already totally angry, but they have a lot of questions, the ones that are want to do this shit.
Yes.
So they don't know what it takes to run this thing.
Right.
But I think if we're going to do this, that if higher security law enforcement, we're on.
Which I've suggested to them after we talked to.
Just trying to come up with a timeframe, like, you know, either the first or second meeting in May, that we have everything wrapped up by then.
I think that would be.
End of May would be twenty fourth, that's the second meeting, you know, if we can work towards that date to have it all wrapped up and approved.
Yeah, I mean, I think as long as.
Everybody like that?
Yes.
They give, they give us three, five days.
First meeting in May, by the second time.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's a month and a half, almost a month and a half, so I'm, okay, let's just try to shoot for having everything wrapped up by May twenty fourth. Yes, sir? Just general consensus as a council, I'll say, because we do have another meeting tomorrow.
He's really looking forward to it.
Are, is council okay with that, Rob, or do they ought to be changed? Rob, I just presented this.
Yeah, I would like to be included on merchants, since there yourself also in terms of public safety, after after that, I mean, I'm.
We've done it this way for.
I see, yes.
Four.
That's.
I mean, basically, you're asking, is is the council happy with the way it's been with the past four years, rather than changing it?
Yeah.
Is your opinion?
Again, I would, I would like to hear from merchants on on what they think, I mean, if one of the, if one of the driving reasons for Lake Fest is to bring people into town to help with economic development and to support our local businesses, and the merchants don't feel that that the parade route helps their businesses, not just one individual, but I mean, is is the collective, then I think I would be open.
Yeah, I mean, I'm okay with that, I guess, a couple hours out of one day out of this four years.
Yeah, so in my letter to them, which is included in the application as well, you'll be able to read what I gave to the businesses, I was intending to have face-to-face conversation with all of them, and I ended up having to go back around, because everybody was on vacation the week I was delivering the letter, but it sounded like most of them were okay, it was just the one that I've received an email back from, and so that's what prompted the meeting. But how, I guess, would you suggest to to get that feedback, or are you just going to wait for them to contact you, or do I need to do anything?
I I would suggest that in your, if you refine your event application, that you include feedback from that, because I think the event application and the event policy actually says that there are going to be street closures, that the local merchants and people affected by it need to be contacted, so I would say just a summation of your meeting in your application.
Okay.
As you refine it, that would be my suggestion.
As well as I think council feedback, Bill, what do you feel like? It's worked for forty years, and there's one person objecting to it, and I don't see it's worth changing. Sally?
I would say, you know, even when it wasn't Lake Fest, if we had a parade through town for Lake Fest, that was basically the route that it took. If the majority of the businesses would like it changed, then.
Put that in the request.
Yeah.
They should request.
Bill?
I'm in the department, I think, with Sally, so.
It's been that way for forty years, I'd say leave it alone.
And we are implementing things based on that one person's feedback, like I said, we have more volunteers on.
And you're trying to move the the crowds or the people.
Yep, we're posting signage. Yep, we're posting signage to show.
There's a wall right behind it or whatever.
Yeah, parade seating this way, which is what the sign will say, it'll have an arrow on it, and then we'll have volunteers walking the sidewalks. We also have, I talked with Wayne about the cluster that takes place around Papa's and the root beer stand, so in order to keep traffic moving, we'll have volunteers posted there with signage saying which street to go down and where to go to unload, rather than jumping off of golf carts in the street, because for me, it's really, safety is number one, so I've had conversations with Wayne at length about the safety and security of the festival, so those are just a few things we're implementing, I don't know that if they've been implemented in years past, but we're trying to help.
Congratulations for all you're doing and just keep up the good work, I mean, really, it's the fact that it's so early this year and it doesn't, it's not a last minute decision, we really appreciate that.
I have a question about the car parking on Main Street.
Yeah.
What's gonna happen with that, is it gonna be blocked off?
Yeah, so I'm.
Pedestrian.
I spoke to Wayne about when to post that signage, and we, we'll post the no parking signs late Friday night, I wanted to maybe wait until like Saturday morning, but it just doesn't seem like it would work, if people are already parked there for other things going on, there's a run that's taking place, which will actually cross paths with the parade, oh, go ahead, sorry.
Try to get all the cars to, on the whole route.
Okay.
So definitely block them, the parade.
Got it.
Most times it's been cooperation, it's not a perfect system.
Yeah.
Yeah, thinking best years, more of the problem is people wanting to cut through the parade route going, you know, up lake, up lake and up lake view, you know, just trying to cross, you know, there needs to be barricades there so people can't drive across the parade.
I mean, we're not out to tow anybody's car.
I understand.
So, yeah, and we've discussed what, what the security would look like, I believe it's the sheriff's posse that's helping, helping that morning, and the, the signage will be there and as quickly as possible, we'll be able to remove, we'll probably prioritize Main Street to remove that signage after the parade has passed through, that's where we'll start, collect it, return it, that's the plan.
Thank you, sounds like a good plan.
Yep.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thanks Andrea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'll see you guys in a couple weeks.
Yep.
All right.
Next, priority project resources grant administration contract?
Yes, this is, as you know, Shannon McCloud is working on our, our project with, as our Oprah grand administrator, you cannot begin to pay her, tell her words till you've been awarded funds, as she, last meeting, we finally got the letter from Oprah for awarding funds, so we now have her contract, it's essentially the typical grant administration contract, twelve pages of this is required by Oprah, it's called third-party provisions, and this is basically Shannon agreeing to meet the federal requirements, whenever you pay a vendor with federal dollars, you have to include third-party provisions in that, that's your equal opportunity, and, and minority and business enterprise policy, Civil Rights Act, et cetera, that's the bulk of the contract, the dollar amounts were already approved when you approved the budget for this project, forty-five thousand, and then there's a labor standards for five thousand, labor standards is where Shannon will have to ensure that the project is meaning data spoken, she has to administer over payroll, she has to interview employees that get hired on the job, that sort of stuff, that's what the labor standards is, so you're approving to execute this contract now. This one, Shannon usually has clerk signature, so you would also be authorizing for this to be signed by town council president, but attested by clerk here, so would be signing it, here it would be attested.
Just, oh, that looked at that one, but it sounds like the typical.
Yeah, that's what.
All these federal ones have to include all the things that you started out with, equal employment opportunity and.
I understand.
Compliance.
Yeah, I said that they're scheduled, we're scheduled, that's just.
It's basically their form with, it's built in and then.
Yeah, I mean, Oprah's very particular about what has to be included.
Yep.
Executed contract, and that third-party provisions has to be there by.
So is there a motion to approve the project resources granted administrator contract with our council's signature and being tested by legislature?
So.
Second, motion made by Bill Ham, seconded by Sally, to approve the project resources grant administrator contract, authorizing the council president to sign it and be attested by legislature, all those in favor, say aye, discussion.
It's a pretty friendly amendment, just, needing attorney approval. It's about two pages long of the non-boiler plate information. Does it fit with your approval, I guess? It looks to be like, it's, it has all the standard terms that we've done with the past.
Okay.
I don't know what the dollar figures were that were agreed upon, so.
Forty-five thousand, five thousand.
And then it makes reference to all of the boilerplate, and I've seen all of that before, you have to have it there.
So a motion made and seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side, motion carries.
I'll make a review, by the way.
I do make a review of this stuff, this was just what I didn't even think about. Yes, I did print a copy for all of you in case you need to reference it, I know I sent this to you last week, the draft I sent you has not changed, I got feedback from the broadband fiber task force, the consultant still, it was gonna be back, but the rest and the members have all moved it, with one exception, one member hasn't got back to me, so be sure to reach out to him. I also cast it through Jim and we talked earlier, I'm going to make a, a specific change after Jim and I talked, that would make the implication of a contract, so whoever would get picked for this RFP, we would still execute a contract between that provider and the town, whether the town is the Culver Redevelopment Commission, or the town council, or potentially both, depending on whether or not we would have any investment in it, and even if we didn't have an investment in it, we would be responsible for doing some easements and permitting, that sort of stuff. So Jim thought it would be prudent to make the authorizing body us and or Redevelopment Commission. So that was the one change that Jim had, and my feeling was that I could write that based on what, you know, I talked about, but I would be looking for your approval of me publishing this RFP pending Jim's final approval as well, and then my plan was also to take this in front of the Redevelopment Commission, where that those members are also.
Office, next meeting is?
Monday.
Monday.
Yeah.
So you would do it at that time?
Yeah, and I would modify the publication date and keep a forty-five day response deadline at that date, so let's say CRC is good with us published on the eighteenth, then I would change this start date and the end date of the meeting.
I have a question. I brought up before that I'd like part of the RFP to be what the subscriber cost would be.
Yeah, yeah, we have a whole, that was something our task force discussed pretty at length.
Very important.
There's also a request for any information on service level agreements, any special services, any special promos, and quite a bit of detail of what we're asking, and they're also, part of the criteria of scoring them is the end user experience.
Right.
I think we put that down at around thirty percent of the score of that.
Okay, thank you.
Who would you be sending this to, what, what providers?
We've met with some providers, but we would also publish it in a way that any provider could respond, the ones we've met with, Inter, Surf, eighteen, RTC, and we also met with T-Mobile, even though that's a wireless solution, and this RFP does not include wireless, this is very fiber lines, and they, the technical requirements have to be fiber.
We also met with AT&amp;T.
Yes.
Sorry, you said AT&amp;T, okay.
Those are the ones I would definitely send it to, knowing they responded to meeting with us, but then if somebody, some other provider wanted to respond.
I guess our current provider wasn't even mentioned.
No, I contacted the current provider and they were not interested in.
Does this broadband affect content and all that?
No, you would still have the option to buy whatever service you currently buy, you know, that.
But it provides the same type of services, correct?
Yes.
Because I think someone here.
This is strictly internet, is that what you're asking me? This would not be, like, if they happened to provide a television package or something, they could put that in the RFP, but this is to bring fiber.
Internet.
This would connect any business or resident that wants broadband fiber connected to their home or their business, this will give them the option for fiber, so it's not cable, like, or co-op. That make sense?
If you do get into with a contract situation, you're gonna have to totally include it, even if you talk to the Redevelopment Commission, because they're gonna be utilizing town right away, so.
Yes.
I don't think we can do an exclusive one or the other.
Are you also gonna have startup costs in your tube for residents or businesses?
Yeah, we've asked for what the costs would be to the resident to install, so, so whether, and also even.
As well as monthly fees.
What, what route are they, any equipment, is there specific equipment they have?
Going to approve the, this man.
I live at Forest Place Apartments, and we have a major problem with people that have all three things, internet, telephone, and cable. When it goes out, they have no phones, no internet, no cable, and they're complaining because we've been off a lot, the picture goes crazy. Now, this does not pertain to cable, so is there anything you guys can do to get us something, cable, in town that we can have a choice besides a dish or a TV which costs us more money? And most of us can't afford that. But every time I call MediaCom and say, it's out, oh, we know, there's an outage in your area and we're working on it, that's the only thing.
Yeah. They don't. Our, our businesses suffer when that happens to.
Right.
No, this, this is strictly an internet connection, fiber is strictly an internet connection.
Other television.
Yeah, will you be able to stream your television, connect your devices? Yes. Not looking at another cable option, we're looking at upgrading.
All righty, thank you.
Sure.
I mean, if I may, our church currently gets internet through MediaCom, and MediaCom considers us a business, even though we are zoned residential by the town, and we're charged three or four more times what an individual would get at their home for the same service, or frankly, less service, as far as throughput capacity and that sort of thing, so in this RFP, if there's any opportunity in their rate structures to allow the churches in town to be treated perhaps on a more equitable basis for the service they're receiving, that would be awesome.
Listen, as a question, how are churches treated versus, yeah.
Yeah.
So we have a link section on, so we can ask it on behalf of the nonprofits and churches maybe.
There's a motion to move forward with the RFP for broadband, thanks, so moved.
Second.
Motion made by Bill, second by Bill Ham, to move forward for the request, RFP for Culver Broadband Fibers Project, further discussions?
Can I just amend that with Jim's final approval, because I am gonna make a few modifications and make sure I.
Subject to review by council.
And I'll turn on revisions soon, yeah. Let's read through this.
And, and to, and afterwards to go ahead and publish, RFP and present it to the companies. All right, Karen, I hope that.
You just need to make sure the people who motion for it are okay with that amendment.
Yeah.
So the motion is to move forward with the RFP for broadband, which is final approval, go ahead and publish, present to company. Is that your motion, Mr. Black?
Yes, it is.
Right.
Thank you, thank you Karen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side, motion carries. Yes, this is real important that we get this movement and get it out the door and get some actions and results, so, thank you, because I know it's been a long time coming.
Thank you.
Arbor Day proclamation. I have in front of me Arbor Day proclamation that the reading says, whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting of trees, and whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, lower our heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air and produce oxygen, provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are a renewable resource giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas in our city, increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of businesses, and beautify our community, and whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Bill Githens, President of the Council, in the town of Culver, Indiana, hereby proclaim Friday, April twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one, as Arbor Day, in the town of Culver, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and further urge, urge all citizens to plant and care for trees to gladden the heart and promote well-being for future generations, dated this twelfth day, April twenty-twenty-one. There are motion to accept this. dated this twelfth day, April twenty-twenty-one. Is there a motion to accept this proclamation?
I move that we approve the proclamation after I, President, decide.
Didn't that be twenty-two?
Yes.
Oh, it should be twenty-two. Thank you very much. Yeah.
I want that, so Karen. Sorry, that's fine.
There you go, Bob. Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made, the second to approve the Arbor Day proclamation. Authorize me to sign it. Further discussion? And then, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same side. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is Resolution Twenty Twenty-Two, NAC two zero two, Amendment Plan for Distribution of the Proceeds of the Town's Grant from the American Rescue Plan Act of twenty-two, twenty-one.
You do not have a resolution as of yet. My recommendation, I'm trying to complete the report, that's due April thirtieth, the federal government. After watching some webinars and after the final ruling came out from Treasury, I would like to request that we change our plan. That was passed in twenty-twenty-one, which is the reference to that. The feds allow for, for non-entitlement units that receive less than ten million dollars, which we, both of them, you can take a revenue replacement automatic. You don't have to provide any sort of calculations or anything, and then you can use that money to spend essentially however you want to. And so, based on your, your motion last meeting to support the Blue zone, we could take that money from there, and still support the water project, which I think initially we wanted to do. And so, that would just make, A, reporting much easier, much simpler, and B, just streamline the process. So I, if you could, I would like to, I spent the last couple of days searching for someone else's plan that I could use, and just got one this afternoon. So I didn't want to spring it on you, but I do want at least your approval to say, yes, we want to take that ten million dollar, you know what I mean? Just take that revenue replacement, go that route versus the water infrastructure that we had first, we used after that. Based on that, then I'm gonna go ahead and finish my report and get that turned in by the board yet. Hopefully get a new resolution in your hands by the next meeting, and it may take me until the next meeting to get that report filed, but at least I know the pleasure of the council.
And our amount really was what, in the neighborhood of three hundred and eight thousand?
It went up to three hundred and thirty-one thousand.
Three hundred and thirty-one thousand.
So, as, as some communities decided that they'd rather not jump through all the hoops, that the rest of us are going to pay through for, for, you know, whatever they were gonna get, that money was allocated to other communities. So I think we get an extra twelve hundred dollars at the end of the day, so.
So, Karen, would you want to, in effect, straw poll the council to support the resolution that you're talking about?
Yeah, and if I can go ahead and just get that, that report off my to-do list.
I would, is there a motion? I would suggest a motion that a straw poll, the council supporting the concept that Karen talked about in revising the, the, uh, RFP, right, the, was it twenty twenty-two, oh-two?
Is there a second? Rich is seconded by Bill Ham to authorize Karen to move forward with our plan. Move and adjust.
Our plan report.
Move forward with our plan report.
And adjust our plan to. Use the standard allowance.
Use the standard allowance. Motion made, say, further discussion?
Was that?
It was. Not that you broke words, my apologies, it was.
Yeah.
Take it, sure.
Just make this all sound better.
Second's okay, Karen.
Yeah, thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Same side, motion carries.
Redden loss, standard allowance, redden loss, standard allowance. I think if you get those phrases in there, you got it.
Yeah. At least I've got to the point where I think I know I can sign the report and submit it, now it's just all the intricacies that I'm seeing on the list, or the people who are like.
Next on the agenda is unsafe building update.
Do you want me to do that?
Would you, please?
All right. Yeah, so Jeanette sent out letters for specific problems, which were ordering demo, some of which are repair and cleanup, some of which are in the jurisdiction of the county. She also proposed dates for the unsafe hearings. Those dates mentioned in that letter. And each case, I believe she gave the seventh. And then, May twenty-fourth is the first hearing date. She scheduled these hearings based on when we have council meetings, so. And I believe they occur at five o'clock. So, letters have gone out. I believe we've heard from two of the homeowners so far, and I just want to ask you about exactly what that letter means, and time, and there's not enough time. Response has been to anyone contacting, you have to put in writing what your request is, whether. Or a request for a hearing. A hearing is automatic if it involves a demo. It's not automatic if it involves a repair or cleanup. So. What their request is. I think Chuck has been contacted by one. Not heard, anyone. That I got, and I wonder.
Any other?
Are two under demo, under unsafe repair and cleanup, one, two, four, under.
Oh, Ted Roberts. Thank you.
Can I just?
Sir.
I, I assume that notice went out that the April twenty-sixth meeting, you're gonna have a hearing over the establishment of the average processing expenses for demolition projects?
It's one.
Right.
And, and just so, to give all of you a heads, if, if you recall, in four fifteen Lakeshore, in addition to recovering our demolition costs, we were also able to recover additional expenses, attorney fees, and those kind of expenses. That was a huge project. Most of these projects are gonna be much smaller, and to streamline the process, the town is able to, after hearing, establish an average processing expense for the demolition projects. It's just the demolition projects involved. And, but you have to make findings as to establishing what those reasonable costs are. And so Jeanette's put all of that together, the legal expense of twenty-four hundred dollars, there's publication expenses, recording expenses, title search, they all add up to a total of three thousand four hundred and sixty dollars. So, then after the public hearing on April twenty-sixth, you're gonna be asked to approve the establishment of that amount. That's what's gonna go in, it's gonna streamline the process, go ask questions about it. That's where that's coming from. It's only gonna affect those landowners where demolition orders are taking place, and it's to recoup your expenses for going from. Thank you.
The manager report.
Okay. I'm trying to make through it swiftly. Vehicle charging station has been installed and is working. There is a. Make contact, Leah, who is working with us on that, has contacted us as of today, so I think we're good to go. April tenth sidewalks in West Jefferson Street. As you guys know, we had the pre-final walkthrough. We're getting closer to the punchless stage, so that one will get closed fairly soon. Lake Mac's Phase Two Trail Project, as you saw from the schedule and the letters we sent out to the homeowners on Plymouth Street, that started back up. They have done the staping and they've just started cutting the asphalt, as we predicted they would start this week. I did send you a letter that I wrote in response to the Oldham letter. I'm not sure that's how he pronounces his name. These are also attached to that letter. I would like to respond to them in writing. Basically, I met with Bob and Troy Group to get their assessment, and because we're adding some inlets and drainage to that area, knowing we have drainage issues over there, the engineer recommends that we install the trail along with that new inlet, or we do anything with that out. Or do something with it. We want that flow into these new drainage inlets. So that essentially is what my letter says, that, you know, we are going to move forward with the trail and then look at whether or not we bring that.
Right.
And I just, your approval or authorization to send the letter.
Motion that you send this letter is explained.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Sally, second by Cliff Levinger, to send the letter to Mr. Oldham, outlining the process with which we're gonna address the alleyway after the. Is that right?
That loss of seven, two, or three, since they signed it as well.
And the second, and is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same side. Motion carries.
Okay, great, thank you. Lake Mac's Phase Three, we have a public hearing on April twentieth, and that will coincide with the Cass Beat Slate Jefferson Trail. I intend to take the day off of work tomorrow, but I am also planning on going door to door in the Cass Street Slate area to hang a flyer about this public information meeting. As late as they scheduled it, I didn't wanna send out letters that arrived the day before of the hearing. It's not a hearing, it's public information meeting, but I have posted this on TGL, we'll put it on Facebook as well. And this is just a general input meeting. This is not required by NDOT. This is us, the town, saying, if you have some input on these projects, please feel free to come and look at them. The Cass Street one is more of a sidewalk project, whereas you guys know Lake Mac Space. And it pretty much is all on Academy land, so they've been notified about the public. And that's where that project's at. Slate and Jefferson, I've already updated you on that. The water project proposal for Midwestern, as you know, we've been working on an easement with academies. Tim and I have taken a look at some changes Culver Academy has made to that easement, and in that process, one of the things Bob pointed out to me a few weeks back is, we've been doing the easement for the railroad corridor, but there's a little chunk of land to connect to Fleet, and it basically looks like the number seven, if you look at it graphically on paper. The top of the seven is that connecting piece, and that has not got a legal description for it. My feeling is that we really should either have a survey or see if the academy has a legal description for that chunk. Our guess is no, they don't. So we will be looking for you to authorize us. That we can move forward with the easement.
That's what, that's why I'm looking at you.
Make a motion to authorize you to get a survey done on that parcel of land, if need be.
Made by Sally, seconded by Rich, authorize town manager to get a survey on this. Over the trail. Further discussion?
Is that right at the end of Fleet?
Yes.
The one, last house, and then?
Yeah.
We, we need a good legal description.
It connects to.
Right accord that.
Right.
Easement, because we're gonna put utilities in there, we gotta make sure we always get to them, so.
I understand that.
We don't wanna give up that piece of the seven in terms of easement.
And ourselves someday wondering how we get to that little chunk of land.
But just FYI, the academy seems okay with what we're asking for.
And there's a big, little cost involved there.
Yeah.
A survey will cost us some money.
Do we need to authorize that?
No, this is just for utilities, not trail. That trail.
Right.
Goes through the end-out process, and NDOT will not start that till environmental work is done.
We authorize the budget for the other work. Midwestern's proposal.
You know, that might be a nice idea down the road, is to the trail project, is pan of easement, not to fleet, but just a thought.
This would not.
Major how these things come up.
I mean, this is part of us trying to get to the Midwestern project, but. Just to get an easement.
Motion made, seconded to authorize Jenny to.
Yes, not.
Right. To get a survey on the missing parcel of land for a utility easement. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries.
All right, the peerless proposal for a new well, this is in a similar situation in terms of easement. We have been talking with Wade and Burke about this easement, and I requested a meeting with them in person because Burke wanted to add some language that would allow this area to potentially be used for retention, which item would never allow. So that doesn't necessarily mean this won't work out. It means that for this easement would be as a low-lying area on that parcel, and from an engineering standpoint, they wanna make sure that they don't need that for retention, or if they had to design something else, that has to force the water into another direction on the property, essentially costs more, et cetera. So we're not at a place of agreement yet for this. Jim is well aware of what's going on with this one. I'm just trying to schedule a meeting with Mr. Collins. So I will keep you on the loop on that, but we're probably still some time out of that. The alley behind Ohio Street, on the south end of town, certified letters and mail letters, both went out. I think for that will be July fifteenth. I only changed, I changed that from July first just because it took me two weeks. But those should be out. I did have Barry McManaway asked if we could put that on the agenda for perhaps the next meeting. Even though he had not received the letter yet, he knows about the project based on the faculty discussing. So he wanted to know if it could be put in on the agenda where they didn't have to wait till citizens to comment on it. The digester blower, Bob's still working hard to get some. The digester blower, Bob's still working hard to get some. And he's been politely hounding people to get him that. Meeting crossings grant, we have not heard yet anything on that. I will let you know as soon as we do. And then I do have under utilities and streets, two. The first one you've seen, it's the Blue River Technology Sledge Bag Quote. As you know, we tend to buy sledge bags every year, and with the digester, being in the shape present, we may have to use more of these than usual. And the total for that quote is $7,340.
To approve the quotation from Blue River Technologies and the amount of $7,340.
For a second?
Second.
Motion made by Bill Clevenger, second by Sally, approve the quote from Blue River Technologies. $1,340. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries.
And then I put another quote in front of you, it's like this. This one came in late today from Bob. He's talked with Karen a bit about it. And this is for a total of $8,622. This is equipment that Bob basically has explained, we used to have two of them, we now have one, it's finicky, it's for testing. So this is something we use on a daily basis, and we would like to get this. As you can see, there's a list of the parts and description. So the grand total of those on the second page is $8,620. And that's designed to. It's for the sewer.
Move to approve the quote from Xion?
Xion.
In the amount of $8,622.
For a second?
Second.
Motion made by Bill Clevenger, second by Bill Ham, to approve the quote from Xion for $8,623. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay. Adventure Sealing Contract, we already did, we talked about Shannon's contract already. Beach Lodge Building, we are still trying to get that going. Bob's been talking with the contractor that's gonna be doing that, and we should have some new fairly soon. We're also working on getting some other quotes related to that. 415 Lake Shore Drive, this is just keeping you in the loop, there will be a public hearing at Plan Commission next week because they've completed another round with TRC. They have a new. They emailed you guys that plan by Rich's request, just so you know what it is and what the changes are, assuming there's a recommendation of some sort from Plan Commission, and then. And it will come to you all next. But anyway, I just wanted to keep you on the loop on what's going on there. Complimentary Plan, I met with MACODG earlier yesterday. We are going to schedule a meeting with the Crossroads team and leadership team. I've tried to build distance about this. We would ideally like to have someone from Visitor Center, someone from Plan Commission, potentially CRC, Council, myself and Karen serve in a sort of a leadership stakeholder group, but then also have a steering committee stakeholder group, and we would. And I'm going to communicate publicly about that in the next point four hours, so heads up in case I tap, I need to volunteer. For any of you. That's the comp plan, and we're ready to get started on that. Special Event Permits, I've got a simple one from St. Mary's of the Lake Knights of Columbus. This is for their candy drive that they do at the intersection. As well as Main Street and Jefferson. This is for two different dates, April 30th and.
Motion to approve the special event permit.
Still move.
Second.
By Bill Ham, second by Sally, to approve special events request from St. Mary's of the Lake Knights of Columbus for the candy drive, April 30th and September 25th. Discussion?
I will. I'm a portion of St. Mary's.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Next event is a similar one with Kiwanis. They do one now with Tens, and it's same interceptions, 7:00 AM to 1:00 PM on June 8.
Motion to approve Kiwanis. June 18th fundraiser from seven in the morning to one in the afternoon.
July 30th, the end date, I have a solo.
I have to abstain on a number of forms.
Second. Motion made by Rich, second by Sally, to approve Kiwanis fundraiser on June 20th, 18th, the rain date of July 31st. Road, Lake Shore Drive, from 7:00 AM to 1:00 PM. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign.
And I'm not asking for the Lake best one at this time, as noted earlier. Broadband Task Force, as you know, completed the RFP, so no more updates on that. Crossroads Culver Team had same steering committee meeting as once a month, and last month, we had Erin Carey from the South End Park. On Hyde Park, sort of the stimulus for that is we've got some ideas floating for the ready grant application process. And David Cartridge invited Erin to come around and talk to us about skating rink in Hyde Park and really how that project got launched and the fascinating $18 million that came out of the long. We also had the Small Business Development Committee, kind of speaker. They told them to arrange that with Phil Clevenger. That was a huge, positive thing for that committee, I think, to get. Speed Team is got a group of young people right now, working with Amber to come up with a presentation for Culver Redevelopment Committee to clear a project that they would like to have funded. And they're sort of giving them some pointers on how to present themselves and how to promote. And then we also have the Quality of Place Team, which has also splintered off into a Housing Committee. Both of those teams are working toward. Project ideas. Some exciting news. Marketing Communications is gonna start working on some internal communications. You guys probably saw I put one out on TGL recently, just trying to keep people updated on what this is about. And we will ramp that communication up. Marshall County Crossroads, Minnie, Laura already kind of updated you on that. Troyer Group was hired to be the consultant, and I'll keep you on the loop on that. Blue Zones is meeting with Plymouth and Reiman this week, I believe, for funding. And I'll let you know what they do. And then Annex Station of Tamara Road and Housing Development, as you know, we had a joint meeting, and you guys were updated on that housing project. Yeah. Go after that. Very informative meeting. Other than the fact that I will be out tomorrow, or going door to door, to deliver those flyers, that is all.
Too much. Move along, the department could record. CMS? No? Nothing? Fire?
Yeah, two small things. As you asked me about last meeting, to get you a schedule of air packs and air bottles, I should have received them.
Got it, thank you very much.
Box, that's what we have, and that's what we have to sell, move on, whatever the case may be. I don't know exactly how we're gonna go about getting rid of it. I've had some interest from other departments. This Marlene, she's okay with it, she just wants me to keep her up to speed with what, show her this list, tell her what Kevin Martin got of it. With your permission, I will try to sell it.
Motion authorize Terry to sell the air pack and bottle list. Sell this presented. Second. Motion made by Bill Clevenger, seconded by Bill Ham, authorize Terry is chief of the fire department to sell the air pack and bottle list as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
The only other thing I got just for information, our air refilling station is down, it's been down for two weeks. Contacted the company that works on it, and they said they'll come sometime. So that's a three statewide, they have three guys, so it sounds like to me that's, so we're trying to kind of like drag it back, and hopefully nothing exciting happens. We will, we do have, we can refill some other departments if we need be, and if that happens. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Please.
Got a few things. I just like the impression too. One is looking at. Box release of passing ordinance. Get a copy of that?
Yeah.
Yeah. But it basically involves the park, and the park and the ordinance. It basically replaces that in the agent, so. Call Amber. So we can pay it, someone can find a problem at 2:00 in the morning, call Amber unless she wants us to.
I'm good.
We can just take care of business. It's just this was on the ATCA and Max last week. The way you were talking. They have a board of workers for the park that we don't, but I don't know why, it'd be a different statute. I don't know if you'd like to research that and see if we can come up with something. Free statutes on it. We applied for a grant through Homeland Security for body cameras, we got approved. Had to do a $1,000 match.
It's a grant for, I mean, how much is this a grant?
The grant's $11,061, but they'll only give us $4,000. So we gotta come up with $7,000. That's all they'll get.
I could rent it, wasn't it?
Thought you said it was only a thousand dollars.
That we'd have to match.
So.
$4,000.
Time out?
I get it.
Did you get it?
Yeah.
That's all they'll prove to give us.
Okay.
We have to do a $1,000 matching, but everything that's needed for the body camera system and everything is $11,061. Kind of like going to buy a hamburger and charge 25 cents for the extra stuff.
How many body cameras?
Five.
We're submitting.
$7,061.
For the thousand?
That's part of it.
That's worth the seven.
I was reading somewhere that art money helps pay for that stuff. Is there any art money left? Not anymore?
I moved it, we approved the amount that was requested of.
I can come up with a month. We have some extra.
Could you say that number one more time?
Pardon me?
Could you say that number one more time? Is it $7,061?
Yeah, that will have to be it.
I'll second those.
Motion made by Bill Ham, seconded by Rich, to approve $7,000. Oh, Bill Clevenger, I'm sorry, Bill Clevenger, seconded by Rich, to approve $7,061 for the match. Police Department for Body Cameras.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Aye?
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries.
Mr. Clevenger?
Yes.
We have a bunch of stuff in our garage, it's like the catchall of everything, the bicycles, stuff that unclaimed, what can we do with it? I've recently had a request for bicycles to donate to help kids out. We have to go through the pick.
You can sell it. Auction, sale, whatever the case might be, or you declare it of no value, and you wanna gift it to some. Also declare this of no value. You can't just dispose a property without selling it if it's of value.
Well, that's why I wanted to know the procedures if you could go.
Wouldn't it be his recommendation as to whether he wants to go ahead and sell?
Yeah, I mean, you could set up, you know, I don't know whether it's worth anything, worthwhile to do that or not, I don't know. If none of it's of any value, I'd probably make a listing of what it is.
Like an auction or something?
Yeah, auction if you wanted to do that.
I don't know, it'll be lawyer enough stuff to.
Yeah, if it's not worthwhile, don't worry about it. I mean, I know that, that's what local governments sometimes do, is they accumulate your stuff and whatever Bob's got out of, you know, utility station and whatever else, and you.
Bring a list to the council.
Yeah, you get it all listed up, and then if you, if you wanna sell it, you set up a Saturday morning with.
Garage sale.
Yeah, garage sale. And you just sell it, and if you, if it's of no value, then you have the council saying it's of no value, and get rid of it, however you can get rid of it.
Townwide.
So get a list.
Join the, join that.
Yeah, you got time.
Bill's retired, he's willing to help on this. Other than that.
Thank you, sir. All right.
So all I have is an update of the elevator shaft. I know the last time we had talked, we were talking about, you know, the beach lodge and the water issues we are having. Unfortunately, there was some stagnant water that does happen from rainfall every time it rains, kind of gets into our elevator shaft. We clean it out or we remove of it every time it rains, but since DME, that's who we contract out to do our inspections. They did a checkup about a month ago and as we talked about last council meeting, there has been some rust because of that stagnant water. They quoted us out to get that fixed. I did have Bob look at it. He said they might be able to fix it for us. But they are coming back, so I have to get our elevator inspected annually and we're up for that. So, they are coming back. I explained to them the problem that we had last time during our checkup. So, they're gonna come and do the inspection. They said it's okay as long as it's not in worse form than the checkup. They can inspect it, so they're coming next week to check that out, but if, if it is in a worse condition, we'll, we'll have to put it out. Wouldn't fix it though until we got that project completed per the request of Bob. It'd be pointless to replace it until we got that whole drainage system in place. So, that's kind of where we're at. That's the update of the elevator.
Don't we have any recourse against? Is it the elevator company or the general contractor?
It's not the elevator company. It's.
The architect?
Yes.
Yes, the architect.
General contractor?
The architect didn't properly.
The designer?
There's no drain. There's no in there. There's no drain in the shaft and there's no pump in the shaft.
Hydraulic elevator.
Right.
Goes underground, gets water in.
And answer your question, you may very well. Yes, I'd have to take a look at it, but.
I think, yeah, we shouldn't be paying for any of this.
I mean, we've already, we've already.
Unfortunately, this has been through approvals and inspections and overprocesses. Whole shebang. I don't.
How long ago was it done? Did we get a warranty on it? Oh, well, the architect wouldn't give us.
We're a year out of warranty.
We're a year out of warranty.
The contractor has made some fixes based.
Been looking on during warranty period. We've continued to have leaks.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's.
I know, but since it was claimed made with problems before that warranty expired.
Right. No, I agree.
Contractor has made the fixes, but I mean, they built things to spec. And where it wasn't built properly, they've come and made the fix. But this was not designed proper.
Yeah.
You have to sue the contractor. That's his defense, so then you're right back to.
Oh, and it's not, I don't think, I, my interpretation of what I'm saying is that it's not Midwest, I mean, it's not, it's not.
Michigan.
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 It's, it's the designer.
Oh, they're all the same things. Yes, yeah, yeah.
I don't know. Okay.
But that's for ADA compliance.
Get into it with it, maybe.
I'll see if I can find my city's contract. I mean. Because that was a over projects, we would have a cop to that. And so would Shannon. It's all been filed next year.
Maybe Shannon, I think, already just said someplace, well, what happens, that's not as possible. At law. We need to look at something.
I mean. The property belongs to the town. The town pays matching dollars for the grant.
Right.
You know, including the architectural fees, I assume. I think if the town's claim is against the architect and, and I would. Get the architect's contract. And, and then, and put together the history on this. That, there have been water problems at Beach Lodge that predated any of this.
Since day one.
Major work was done there, but if it isn't, they got into this knowing that there weren't any problems with water.
I think the problem mostly stems from like the water issues that like didn't exist prior to this construction. That's where I'm. I think like the enclosed balcony, that's brand new and we get water in the enclosed balcony, the elevator shaft, IT room, that's completely new. Structure of the building.
I mean, the elevator didn't even exist.
Exists prior to, yeah.
Right, right, but there, there were problems with flooding in the beach lodge prior to our, our renovation project.
Yes.
Yes, and so, the architect knew that those problems existed and we had done some remediation prior to the cement construction, as I recall. Wasn't there work done to divert water?
Yeah, on the east side.
Right, so the architect did not, I mean, should not have gone into this line. They knew that there were water problems there. They hadn't designed a system that's properly protected the building in its rotation. And they knew that all, they designed that wall, they designed the.
Yeah.
I think, yeah, I think, yeah. I agree. Okay. Anything else, Amber?
No, that's all. Just.
Utilities. Bob, longer, does he have anything?
Yeah.
Bob?
Bob's on and you've covered my items and I thank you.
I'm gonna guess that he said. Yeah.
Okay.
I think I covered all of Bob's, so.
Sounds good.
Yeah, he's, we've been communicating a lot lately.
I know.
Course report.
I have a couple of invoices for your approval that are over two thousand. The trailer group for two thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars for parking. Priority project resources, three thousand dollars for the parking improvement project. Terry truck equipment for repairs to one of the street vehicles. Another one for priority project resources for six thousand dollars and then Wylond Humphrey Columbus Recce for six thousand two eighty-five eighty for legal.
There are motion to approve the, motion, those over two thousand dollars.
Still move. Second.
Motion made by Rich, seconded by Bill Ham, to approve the funds over two thousand dollars. Any discussion? Questions? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close? Sign? Appreciate it.
I just have a quick reminder that the garage sales are April twenty-ninth and thirtieth and then cleanup day is April fourteenth.
There you go, April twenty-ninth and thirtieth, I think, the town garage sale.
Being up there.
Cheer that way, townwide garage sale, April twenty-ninth. See you this weekend, I hope. I'll be right to the with you. Certainty report?
Uh, chapter forty-five, Culver. This is Scotty Manhawk. Uh, good news to report. Judge Palmer granted the town's motion to dismiss the complaint of BIP Ventures and the other five or six plaintiffs on a series of grounds. I think I sent all of you a brief summary of all of that. I didn't bring it to repeat it, but, so, that's good. Under the trial rules, a plaintiff who has his case dismissed early on has the opportunity within a couple of weeks' time, fourteen days, I think, to file an amended complaint where he can restate things that supposedly, you know, solve some of the problems that the court had with the original complaint or the defendant's end with the original complaint. In this case, that was due, was it April eighth, I think? But he got an, he requested an extension and was given an extension until into May. Notice of appeal, if he could appeal the judge's dismissal, that would have to be filed by April twenty-eighth. If he waits and just files an amended complaint on May eighth, that will extinguish his opportunity to appeal this decision of the judge. I have to tell you, I, you know, there, I'm, I, I don't know everything. I don't know a lot of things, but I am going to be amazed if they can rewrite the complaint to get past all of the problems that the judge pointed out with the complaint. I mean, he basically deep-sixed it on three different legal theories, but were all, all argued by our insurance attorney and by the insurance attorney for the fire department and, and the town, so, or the county. So, you know, not to say that he can't, but there's a couple of those things that I, I just think that he's got kind of a tough, tough go of. So, I'll keep you advised. We'll see what happens, but one of these days we'll be able to get to the final chapter of that book. And that'll be cause for celebration.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mark.
Anything else, sir?
That's it. Thank you, Mr. Carroll.
Anyone present or online for utility shut-off ordinance violation? You're seeing none. Let's move on to citizen input. Anyone online for citizen input? Anyone in the room for citizen input? On council issues. Rich? Bill? None. Sally?
I just have one thing. The CRC. I'm going to be moving forward on, we're just.
I have nothing. Karen, do you have anything else? Eddie?
Your phone?
No, sir.
That's adjourned claims. Motion to adjourn to claims?
Eight. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Buildings.
I know, I know.